Okay, let's see how that works.
Okay, I am three HECO engineers for transportation streets, roads, water system and water, wastewater system. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor Council. We see attached engineering status report for day of the fall of this year.
Thank you.
For our first item is on transportation streets and roads. Item A, out of funding. Item number forty, the fiscal year twenty-six application was submitted to the city on November eighth for review and approval. The next item is on H, on the Idaho Strategic Initiatives Grant Program. Items number fifteen through seventeen. Fifteen, HECO submitted for city review, change order number three on November fifth, and P application number four on November seventh for review. Item number sixteen, final project walkthrough was completed by HECO City and CSC contractor on November sixth. And seventeen, the certificate of substantial completion of the remaining bunch of those items were submitted to the contractor on November seventh. Last item is on page nine, item number forty-two, on the wastewater system. HECO submitted to DEQ the revised wastewater facility plan and INI study on November seventh. And it's all have pre- here, Mayor Council.
So the walkthrough was all approved and all golden?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was three remaining items. One was they were getting some GPS coordinates for the as built or record drawings as built. So there's a comparison because there was a change in the original drawings with the added sized streets to change order then one and two. And they're they they're going to submit the alley abrasion test on the different material they use north of ninety-five on the three inch minus. So they submitted to us for reviewing the alley abrasion test order ability, check durability. And then they owe us, well, they owe the city some density curves for the materials on the two court range. Because they gave us compaction tests, but and that density curve is a function of those compaction tests based on the max field maximums try density, which those were given to us under under review. So we're still reviewing the alley abrasion test and the density curve and we're still waiting. We have those, we're reviewing those and we're we have yet to receive.
So when the test don't come back, what's going to work?
Well, we have sixty-seven thousand dollars as they're still on, they can still get, depending the status on those two.
So if the compaction stuff doesn't come back, do they get back, right?
No, they they got the, I'm pretty sure that's in, that where I reviewed them and it looks like it meets it. We just got to review it to the five team on it. But if, yeah, that and the other abrasion test.
So on item forty-two, we submitted that to DEQ. Do we expect to hear back from them at some point?
Soon. Let's see if that's, we're hoping to get from them soon. On them approving the alternative on the Sager and on the outfall relocation, that'll be contingent upon course of review and on the environmental side, on the pH monitoring, how that's going. I haven't heard anything yet from you, Corey.
No, I haven't heard anything yet from DEQ.
Best case scenario is if that goes well, then the outfall relocation is the one to go to, but that's still in the air.
Is that monitoring, is that remote or something?
Uh, pH?
Yeah.
No, it's a, there's a probe that they put in the river and they come up and download the information off of it.
Okay, so they have to come up?
Yeah, which I downloaded the information off of it once, just to make sure it was like three or four days after they, we put it in, because I helped them walk out to the river and put it in. And so I did it like three or four days after we put it in, just to make sure it was doing its thing. And then I know that Emily Monch who's been up at least once to download it and calibrate it, and so has Matt.
So every time they come up to download the information, do they recalibrate it or?
No, it needs to be calibrated once a month. So and I think that that was their, their, well, I've only heard from each one of them once that they were coming up to get the data. So I don't know if they've been up any more than that, but it records every fifteen minutes. So it's a ton of data.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm assuming they're probably going to be pulling it out of the river, well, before it starts freezing, before the river starts freezing, because they don't want it in the river while the rivers freezes up. So, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Robert on any of that stuff? Item four, Commercial Street Improvement Project Compliance Solutions and Contracting LLC, change order number three.
With the change order, what we're paying this time, that doesn't include that sixty-seven. Is that right? That'll be just a pay on another pay request. We haven't paid that as much.
They have one last final payment application, which is pay up five, with just shy over sixty-seven thousand. Everything looks good so far, and we're hoping to get every, the record drawings and everything and based on our.
But that'll finish out just the pay ups that were already approved, right?
Yeah.
Regular pay ups. I just want to make sure, because I know this came in a lot less than what we thought it might, what we had planned, which is great. So I think HECO went and with the measurements and everything made.
Those were helpful.
Made helpful. I just wanted to make sure that that sixty-seven is in the pay up. It's not a change, right?
It's in the pay up, not a change. The worst case scenario was that they didn't give any of that and keep the sixty-seven, but that doesn't sound like they're going to, they're complying.
But that's what we already planned on paying.
Yes, sixty-seven, the number right there, I forgot the exact amount, but just shy, just a little bit over sixty-seven thousand.
Any questions on the change order?
For this agenda, my agenda item, we need both the approval of the change order and the approval of the application for payment.
Well, technically, when you paid bills, you paid the pay up. So just the change order. That's why it's a separate agenda item.
I make a motion to approve change order number three for the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one ninety.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Commercial Street Improvement Project Report, Public Works Supervisor, Corey Morgan.
I don't know who I'm supervising. It's just me.
Yeah, sometimes that's quite a bit.
Don't need to point out the obvious. Uh, so was it last Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday. Wednesday. Uh, the mayor and I, Robert and Scott from HECO, and then Cam, who was the project foreman, and Rich, the general manager, were up to do the walkthrough. A little tidbit of information on that. The project manager, Shane Rogers, I got a call from Rich the third week of October stating that Shane no longer was with the company. They parted ways, and he was the project manager on the whole project. So that was interesting. There was some communication problems with, you know, throughout the project, and we don't know if that was, why did that happened or not. But anyway, we did the walkthrough. Really, you know, there was some little things, like there was a little bit of ponding over there by, um, behind Mike Macedo's law. Mayor and I looked at it. We talked about it. It's not in the traveled lane, the area that where the asphalt was done, because of all the utilities with CTC and our storm drains and all that stuff, they couldn't, there's not really any compaction they could do anymore than they had. And with it being four inches thick, it's not, you know, water ponds there, but it's not something that I'm worried that is going to cause any issues down the road.
Did you ask Macedo? Should there be an issue with him?
Nope.
Actually, it was draining to that drain. When it was raining the other day, I drove down there.
I'm glad the cities, or I mean, I'm glad the state put a white line.
Yeah, you like that? Did?
He threw eight fit.
I sure hope so. He did. They did that to him the year before, too.
I thought that was just traffic control issues with Ivy Park.
Yeah.
I should have thought it was an arrow.
ITV likes to come up and test their striping machines up here and send their new guys to do the striping. So. We'll see.
He's out there picking up every little white rock.
As far as the rest of the walkthrough, you know, and drainage, I haven't seen all the drainage parts, but what I have seen is seems to be doing really well. Didn't see any major issues or anything. There was some issues brought up by HECO about, like, where some of the paving ends and goes into gravel and, you know, do we want to have them cut it straight? Probably with cutting it straight off is you leave that lip there so you could potentially get more of a, could break it away faster than, and so. What else was there?
Round concrete.
Oh, yeah, that, there was some, you know, there's some concrete collars and stuff that aren't perfectly round. They're not, you know, symmetrical. They don't look the best. But functionality wise, all the manhole lids and water valves are below the road surface, so we don't have to worry about the plowing of snow hitting the lids and popping them up. So I wasn't, I wasn't too concerned with how perfectly round they were. And our wide sweeping turned down there at Haller still isn't wide enough, but that's not our fault. That's just lazy truckers coming through, not taking it wide enough. I haven't seen who does it, but.
There's definitely tracks.
You could see the tracks in the gravel on the sweeping corner, but, you know, I mean, it's good, what, eight or nine feet?
Eight or nine feet off the corner.
Nine feet wider and nice big sweeping corner, just still.
We thought we were doing a good thing, but we didn't.
Extreme. Yeah, so.
My trailer follows me right behind me. Thanks for paving my road. Appreciate it. It's a lot smoother as you're there.
Yep.
Now, the exciting thing is it's going to be a good road and it's going to be good for a long time.
I'll be sure to tell Warrington that this guy did a heck of a lot better butt job paving my street than you did.
Yeah. Warren was, Warren's going to say, we're not a paving company. So, anything else, Corey?
I don't think so.
If you have any questions for Corey on the road. Okay, we'll move on to item six. First Street Local Road Improvement Program, L.RIP, application for funding.
I have a question.
Okay.
Total cost of the project, hundred fifty thousand, the amount of money applying for, one hundred thousand, a mountain source of other funds used in this project, twenty-five thousand. Project's a hundred and fifty thousand. That is your grant, a hundred thousand, we're going to pay twenty-five thousand. Where's the other twenty-five thousand coming in?
In there.
I think it's a HECO question, not a Corey question.
That's what we used last year, and we could change it. The city.
Well, she's, we didn't. Yeah, she's just wanting to know where the other twenty-five is. But it doesn't technically have, we don't have to say what fund it's coming out of, right?
It doesn't have to be, as long as they have that total at the top and obviously the amount of money that the maximum amount, the city's going to give is a hundred thousand.
Oh, okay. As long as we say we'll pay the balance.
Yes.
Yeah. And to, I mean, Second Street came in, the total project on Second Street was a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, said and done. So for roughly the same stretch of road. And I've, I ask at every transportation meeting that I go to, I ask LTAC, I say, when are you guys going to bump that amount up? And every time I get the same answer, it's too competitive, we can't. So it's just.
Exactly.
Well, when I first started working, that hundred thousand did everything. We paid the engineer and everything. And now that same stretch is a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Eventually, we'll be able to do ten feet.
So what was, if we recall, what was the cost of Fourth Street in front of the high school?
Fourth Street was a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
And they put curves on both sides.
Fifty-some thousand dollars in concrete work.
Yeah.
Second Street was all asphalt with gravel shoulders and that's it.
Can't do anything.
That's how much things have gone up.
Yep. Wow.
The only other thing I had is just basically book here, not bookkeeping, housekeeping. And that we need to have the maps updated. It's still showing the connection between First Street and Haller as having two triangles blocking it. It's only the tiny, tiniest triangle that is blocking.
That's right.
Is that an old county map, maybe?
It's, uh, seventeen, March of seventeen. Yeah, that section there.
And Haller is not blocked by those. We have that big piece now.
Yeah. Just one piece we don't have.
Just that one though?
Spite piece.
Spite triangle.
Also got it from the previous.
Yeah, it's an older.
County map.
Is that up there?
Okay. The only other thing I had.
Because we updated the maps and the facility plan, so it gets better.
Okay. Someday, someday.
And the only other thing missing on that is the.
Letters of support.
Yeah.
And I got one today, haven't sent it to Robert yet. And I talked to three other, the three others, and one was gone for two weeks and missed the email.
Oh.
Anyway, they're, they're coming. They'll be here. I promise.
Mayor, we did need that second page signed, HECO submitted.
But I'll need it approval tonight, you know, and to go ahead and submit it.
Okay.
And the mayor to be able to, well, actually, it's all ready to sign except just sticking in the new map and the letters, right?
Yeah.
The new map, letter signature page, by.
Yeah, they have to give them approval to do that, right?
So we need a motion for that?
Do December fifth of the final, if any, way ahead.
So it's approved, so I can summon this and get it.
The First Street one? I'm going to have to motion to approve the First Street Local Road Improvement Program application for funding.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Drinking Water Loan Letter of Interest. Those are underway, correct?
Um, we didn't get approval to start on this time from the city.
Right, you're wanting them to give you approval to start on the letters of interest so that they know they can get going on them. And then also, I'm not sure if you need anything on water, but I know you knew, need direction on the clean water one.
Correct, yeah. On water will do the, well, number one rehab part to get, hope to get, at least we go to ladder, get it this next time. And on the wastewater, your direction on the recommended alternative or the city selected alternative, and which one of the priority projects the city wishes to be put on there? I know priority number one was step interior road sewer replacement.
We have the sewer line replacement and manhole rehab up there. I guess my question on that particular part of it, can't we rehab the manholes without doing the sewer line initially?
Yeah.
And that's what I was hoping we could lean towards, because I think the INI, if we get that under control, it would help a lot. And if all that, if all that water's coming in through those manholes, we got to get that stopped.
That's what the I have, at least on the lower two manholes, the water by I.
Yeah.
What would the pipe connects into the manhole right there downstream? And on the, there is some offset joints on there. Say one, you could do the manhole, but also recommend on offsets on those pipes, replacing those. It wouldn't, it doesn't hurt putting that whole priority project in there. Say the city doesn't get all of it, then you just supply for the manholes, but if you can get all of it, you can, I'll buy you that.
Just got to do a step at a time. I mean.
Buy for the whole thing and then just go, we can do the manholes.
Just try to stop the bleeding with tourniquets instead of taking the heart out.
Better ask for more money than now at the beginning than not use it than ask for a different project.
Yeah.
You know, manhole replacements, they can discover and those pipe, more I'd be digging to there.
Problem is, it's just the amount of money. I just can't see putting that, that huge burden on the citizens of Cambridge. I just can't. So we've got to start small and just try to fix things as we go and not have a massive project that's going to cost three or four million dollars, whatever our new thing is. That's my point of view. City Council may want to spend all that money all at once, but I don't want to.
Do we want to put on that relocation of the outfall also?
Well, that would be like, I mean, it's got to be right there. Those are the top two priorities to me. You know, if, if our pH is under control with our, with the new monitoring, those would be the next two items that would, were best for our system or that are the most critical in our system, is stopping the infiltration of water and then getting that disbursement out to the river instead of into Rush Creek.
And then we can go from there on.
Then we can see if we're still out of violation or not.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the whole goal, get out of violation and then work towards this other stuff.
Yeah, and.
Reasonably, instead of trying to sink the city financially.
In addition to that, our new, our permit expires in 2025, so I'm sure there'll be, you know, I don't know what the, how DEQ progresses with, you know, writing permits. Our last one was administratively extended for ten plus years. So, but now they're due every five years. So let's see, if our pH, if the pH monitoring that they did comes back better, then we'll have to make sure that that gets taken into account when they write the new permit, which will lower our ammonia limits. So.
Something I'd like to check into, though, is I know Genesee, somebody foot the bill for their whole system. And I don't know if it was Idaho Rural Water or who it was.
No, that was so, well, they got, so DEQ's loans, they have, they have to have so much principal forgiveness allotted when they give out their loans. And I know the training class that I went to, it talked about Genesee stuff, they had, they were on the hook for six million dollars. But the whole total projects that they were doing between water and sewer was like twenty-seven million. So, I mean, they still got hit pretty hard, but I don't know if somebody, if they found money somewhere else to take, cover that six million.
Yeah, I was just talking to Kayla Schwingfelter-Brown, who I think she's an engineer up there, and she says the whole thing got paid.
Hmm, interesting.
And I don't know if it's just because the city said there's no, there's no way possible we can pay for this system. There's just no way. And I think, you know, you wonder if DEQ finally opens up their pocketbook and says, well, the city can't afford it, period in the story. So if we want it done, we're going to have to foot the bill. And I wonder if that's what happened.
Why don't you ask her?
Yeah.
Well, she was very specific that they, that the bill was paid and it wasn't by the citizens of the city.
Because I don't think they're on the biggest offender list, so I'd be surprised that they got that report that just came out. Did you guys see it on AICs?
Wow.
From Idaho Conservation League.
Sewer wise, but they also ran out of water a couple of years ago. That was their, they had their wells dried up and Idaho Rural Water had to go up there with water trucks. So that very well could have been, you know, mitigating factor.
So we probably need to finish one agenda item before we go to the other.
Yeah. We're distracted. Okay, so we need to go back to drinking water. We need authorization to put in a letter of interest.
I make a motion to do a loan letter of interest, drinking water.
I second it. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then item eight, a letter of interest. And then item eight, uh, letter of interest for, um, environmental quality clean water loan letter.
But he needs to know exactly what you want in there. The other one, we're applying for the same as last year, basically, is what he stated, but this one, he needs to know exactly what parts you want in there.
So for the water, it's the well number one we had, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've been applying for, so.
And so what's our new?
I don't know, DEQ has it.
A new solution, we don't even know what, we don't even know what number it is.
We could write it up in a way that contingent upon if PH is below, then the relocation of the outfalls is the city's elected alternative.
Okay.
We could write it up like that, even if there's not a solution from D throughout this time, we'll write it up like that when it kind of, time comes for that, submitting early Jan, first week of January, we'll write it like that.
Yeah.
Just set up the facility plan.
It hasn't actually officially been moved yet?
No, no, we've just talked about it as an alternative to get our, our PH, um, under control, and we were talking about, uh, taking the pipeline instead of dumping it into the creek, dumping it into the river with a diffuser that.
Is that what the trap was?
Spreads it out more. Yeah, I'm sure that's where the probe is, in the river.
Where, where approximately?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a spot that, but anyway. So that, is that probe near where this would dump into the river instead of?
It's, it's upstream, um, about a hundred and fifty feet, so it's, it's upstream from where the confluence of the Rush Creek and Luiza River meet, so.
What we want clean water loan letter of interest to include, that's not an option, though.
What's not an option?
That we selected, it was contingent.
Because we don't have the contingency, that's what she's saying.
Yeah.
DEQ hasn't submitted it to us.
That's how we wrote the facility plan, that's how we wrote, written up. Outfall relocation, contingent upon the outcome of the PH monitoring, and if that didn't go well, then Sager system goes, but if it does go well, then Sager system's out the window and, not the window, but.
Put on hold for a few years.
Put on hold for a few years, but for, uh, our new project is the outfall relocation. And priority one.
Can I just say, take what he said?
And priority one project is the, the improvements the mayor settled, manholes on.
Oh, okay, and cemetery road.
To go along with the outfall relocation.
The outfall?
Yeah, that.
Because the facility plan has treatment alternatives and collection system alternatives.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Okay, here, second.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Got it, Robert?
You'll see it next, the next, well, you'll see it before we submit it.
Levi, he's in charge of item nine.
Yep, I make a motion, you can.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Done loading? Are you still loading?
Yeah.
Who's got, for who? I know somebody that, oh. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just walk up to his house with a chainsaw and just start. No.
Have you Cory?
I ha, uh, I haven't.
Can you?
The last one that I did.
You did what's the sidewalk?
No, we had to do one for this project, for Commercial Street, for like a, we had to have.
A midterm.
Kinda like a midterm, but it had to be in by September thirtieth, I think, what it was, just with some, you know, uh, percent of project completion to date, um, and. So.
I think they're thinking about putting some of those great big concrete, or your things there.
Hey, I've seen them. Bury some steel posts and fill them with cement.
We can also check with stuff, stuff, Kanga, on whatever he uses.
Here.
For next time?
Yeah.
Cool, that'll reduce a lot of pages. Or file and update it like that.